My clock says six thirty and I see in the, in the room that we have a forum of the city council present. And so I'm going to call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough, Kansas to order. First item on our agenda is approval of our consent agenda. Uh, today, first item is vouchers totaling two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars, fifty-five cents. Did everyone receive copies of those vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Second item, CDBG vouchers totaling sixteen thousand, two hundred. Did everyone receive copies of those?
Yes, yes.
Um, lastly, minutes from our October three, twenty twenty-three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of those minutes? Were there any questions, corrections regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I would, uh, accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we come to our first public comment opportunity. And I see we have members of the public present in the room. Um, do we have some online? It doesn't look like it. Um, is there anybody here that would like to address the council?
Well, not really. I just want to know about this, uh, grant that you're working on.
Okay, well, we're going to talk about that here in just a minute. And if during that time, if you have a question, we'll allow you to ask, ask any questions you may have, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the first item up is a public hearing for a proposed community development block grant application. For one twenty-six North Main. And, uh, tonight we have Crystal Henin with Ranson Financial. And so Crystal, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back. Um, so we are talking about the CDBG application for one twenty-six North Main. Um, in our local newspaper, the Free Press, we have printed out what will be happening to the building. Uh, we will be applying to CDBG, which is the Kansas Department of Commerce for their small cities, community development. Block grant funds for their downtown commercial rehabilitation. Currently, it's going to consist of demolition, mobility, um. And inside fixing the listed that was in the newspaper. Do you guys have a copy of what was listed? I'd be happy to read it off if you wanted to.
Pretty lengthy.
It is pretty lengthy. Be fixing the windows, fixing some walls, um, fixing the floors, fixing the ceilings, fixing the doors. Uh, there's going to be a lot of rehabilitation for the building. Um, we are the, the estimated project cost is five hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. We are requesting a grant from CDBG, which is at Department of Commerce for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, this is also going to be heal, it'll also be paired with the heel grant that we've already won for this, um, address over here. At this point, um, I will take first any questions from the council or the mayor? Do you guys have any questions about what we're doing here and, and the application that we're asking to, to put in?
You might explain that on CDBG grants, I believe the city has to be the, the conduit for, for these grants.
Great idea. So for CDBG, only cities and counties can apply. So we will be talking about, uh, working with the owners of the building here just a little bit within our local agreement. Um, to, so the city would be the applicant and the owners would be the sub-applicant on this application. So, um, it is a basically an open round. We could put in. January third, fourth, depending on how it falls throughout the, the year to the beginning of December. So it's almost a full year of open applications. Once we turn it in, if they like our application, they'll come out for a site visit. At that point, we'll give them a tour, discuss all the things that we need to fix on the building. Um, and then at that point, if they like our project, they'll say, go ahead and start your environmental review, expect a letter from the governor. Which basically means they're going to fund our project. Um, so at that point, we would go ahead and start the information, come back to the council and say, we've been awarded this. And then move forward from there. Um, this will not cost the city any money whatsoever. Uh, but you are just the pass through for the applicant.
Right.
Um, the Driggers are going to be the applicant and they will, in the inner local agreement, it explains that they will cover all costs. So the engineering, hour fees, um, and any of the additional fees to fix the building. So basically you're, you're strictly pass through. You will get the money directly from CDBG. And the, the administration staff will have to, will have to bill out the checks. Um, the Driggers will put in the other portions of whatever pay application we're doing for that amount. So it'll be a percentage cost of what CDBG will pay, and then they will cover the rest of that pay application. And when we get to pay applications, I'll be here or Rosemary will be here and we'll walk you through it. Um, but you guys have been through them before when we've done the, uh, the COVID business funds. So it'll basically go just like that, only the Driggles will bring over a check to, to cover the rest of that portion. So, um.
It also works like our current community development block grant with the childcare center.
Yes.
Effectively, it's the same.
Exactly.
Kind of arrangement.
Exactly. Just like we are sponsoring their application, we won that one. We're going to walk you through those steps as well. Um, they're all going to work the same.
I think some people might want to know, uh, if the city is being involved in all this. Uh, what benefit will that just be to the city in the long run?
We have an event center here in town, which is, I think is fantastic. Um, we're going to update one of your oldest buildings on your main street. And, um, rehab it to where we're going to, uh, water seal it to where we're not taking in any water. Um, and it's going to be a great usable space, right? For this application, we're doing the main level in the basement. Um, down the road, we would like to discuss the third level, which, um. Right now their vision is maybe some apartments, which would be great for you guys as well. You guys could definitely use some, some additional.
There's a lot of room up there.
Yeah, there is.
I worked in that building, so I know.
Oh, great. Yep. So.
I've had a bunch too.
Yeah, and this application is really going to help fix the building, so it doesn't continue to crumble.
And just, just for clarity sake, because Councilman Driggers isn't here. This is not Councilman Brent Driggers, but his brother.
Yeah, Eric Cantini.
Eric Cantini.
They're the owners of the building.
Just for clarity. Any other questions for Crystal? Rod, did you have a question?
Well, was there a, a prior grant on that building already, did you say?
So we had put in for the heel grant through the Department of Commerce, which is to rehab older buildings and cities. And we did win that grant. We won seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, I believe is how much that was.
Already went into it.
Uh, only a portion. We will be matching those funds with the CDBG. But we did go ahead and did, did a little bit of patchwork to the roof, um, and started on the doors.
So with the CDBG, the two put together, it would be three hundred and twenty, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars total. In grant funds.
Yes.
That's just for the downstairs.
It'll be for the main level and the basement.
Right. You haven't started any upstairs yet. So what's that going to cost?
Upstairs is a whole different project. It'll be in another phase. We don't even have a cost estimate for that. But this one will definitely help. We'll be fixing the roof instead of just the patchwork to help stop the water from coming in. We're going to fix the windows that are pulling away from the building. Uh, we're going to do quite a bit of, of rehab work on the inside. There'll be AD restrooms, um. New doors, floors, ceilings. We're, we're going to put a lot of great work into this building.
You gotta replace all the windows, right? And ones in front, I know how bad they are. They were dead.
So Rod, it seems like you, I know you've asked a couple of questions, but I'm sensing there's some concern on your part about this project, so.
Uh, we're going to, that, grants are tax money. It, it didn't come off, the, the state hasn't got any money, really. It's all tax money that we've given it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so they end up with ownership of the building. So who pays the taxes then after we put five hundred and seventy, you know, thousand dollars into it?
Technically, it's federal money. Technically, it's federal money.
Federal taxes.
It's not state tax money.
But it's still tax money.
Obviously doesn't have any money.
Yeah.
So they, uh, what I want to know is, uh, how is it going to be taxed then when it's done?
However, the county decides to tax it.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be taxes, commercial space.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, downtown.
But if, but if I'm getting at what Rod's asking. The building will not be taxed based on its condition today, but it'll be taxed based on its value and condition.
Right.
After the improvements, is that what you're asking?
Right. What, what, what's been put into it?
Right.
Yeah, the county assesses every year.
I mean, that'd be if you had a house that was priced at five hundred and seventy-four thousand, you'd be paying it pretty.
Sure.
Yeah, and it'd be even higher with the commercial.
On Main Street.
Yeah. I can't speak for the county, but I know that they look for every, every dollar of improvement you put in. I'm going to guess that they will in this case as well, but again, we don't know for sure. I can't speak for them.
And the owners will remain the owners and they will take care of all the taxes and everything every year.
That money will be awarded to somebody, even if we don't get it.
Absolutely.
Rather that money be in Hillsborough.
Absolutely.
Whether it's there or not, they'll borrow it someplace, right?
Right, they will, but they will award that amount of money somewhere, yep.
Well, I just, my, my thinking is I want to make sure that that's going to be, uh. What would you say? Available to rent to?
Yeah, so that is their, part of their plan, um, is to have rentable spaces in there.
Is there anything else we can address for you, Rod?
No, I think, uh.
I mean, you, you, you took the time to show up and I want to make sure that.
Well.
That we're.
I've lived here for fifty-seven years and, you know. Care about the town. I would sure, I want to see that it's going to be something that we're going to be proud of and that we can, it's going to do everybody some good.
Absolutely.
Uh, not just Driggers or whoever, you know. Uh.
Absolutely.
So anyway. That's my feeling.
Okay.
I'm, I'm for the talent too. You know, that building sat there a long time. I thought somebody would have tore it down by this time.
Technically, it's on the state historical society's list. Um, so there would, there would be a lot of hoops to jump through if we're going to tear it down, but fixing it up is, is the best option. And we will continue its historical value with that.
So since it's on this, the historical, do you think that gives you guys a better chance of getting awarded that money?
Absolutely do. It's fantastic. I don't know if you guys have been in that building in a while, but what a great building. I think they're really going to love it.
Yep.
It's a good project. Um, now we have, we have a great team put together and I think that we're gonna, we're going to knock down the ballpark. Be a great space. And you know what? It's a nice building in your downtown area. Let's fix it up and make it look nice.
Yep.
Well, I was thinking about the Shepherd House. We've been spending money on that house and what does it bring in every year? I think the last time I heard somebody say they got fifteen hundred dollars in, in admissions to.
It, it does not make money, no. It's a.
You know.
It's a lovely facility for the museum, but it is not a moneymaker for sure.
No, restoring it was pricey. That slate roof, I'd hate, hate to say what that cost, but it was out of this world. Bust some wallpaper upstairs. Norton, you're the owner that, or, uh, ordered that. He says, that's what they want. It had to match what was in there.
Sure.
It was almost special made.
Yeah.
So.
I believe it.
Anything else, Rod?
No, I think that's.
Okay. All right. Jane, is there anything you'd like to say?
Um, no, I didn't even get the newspaper last week.
Okay. All right. Well, then we are ready to, uh, to take some action at this point.
Okay.
Unless there are any other questions from the council?
It's my question.
Okay. Yeah, so we have, I guess, consideration of the.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple items here.
So, first, we got a couple resolutions now to.
Yeah, so these are, these are form resolutions from CDBG's grant application. So there's a couple that we need to. To look at. Uh, apologize for not getting them out ahead of the meeting and I didn't know we had to have this action taken, so. Uh, what you got here is a copy of, uh, the certifying a legal authority, uh, to apply for the, for the, um, block grant. Small city, community development block grant from the Kansas, uh, and its Department of Commerce and authorizing mayor to sign. And submit such application. Again, it's a form application. You'll see that it came directly out of the application packet for CDBG, so. Um, that would be twenty-three, uh, two thousand twenty-three dash eleven. Um, and we'll put all this out on the, on the website, so everybody can get a look at it once we have it, but. Um, so that's what that one is. And then there's twenty-three dash twelve, which declares, uh, building blighted with respect to the community. Our Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. So, and, and Crystal can probably explain why we have to declare it a blight. Uh, in order to qualify for that.
And it is part of the process for a CDBG commercial rehab. Uh, we will also be having the city put together a letter that describes its code violations, any kind of building violations. And it basically shows to CDBG why you need to fix this building.
So again, that's a, that one is directly out of the CDBG application, so.
Um. So we would need to take action on.
We have to approve both of these, yes.
Now we can't, we have to do them separately.
So you'd have, the, the action would be to approve resolution twenty-three dash eleven.
So, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven and authorize a mayor to sign?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves, Councilman By seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the council, Councilman By.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven is hereby approved and the mayor will sign. And next up is, uh. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Do I have a motion to, uh, approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve?
Oh my goodness.
Councilman By moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the council, Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman By.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign.
And the last action with regard to this is the interlocal agreement that was in the packet. Uh, apologize for the formatting. It scanned in there, kind of strange, but, um. This was actually, it was written by Andrew, uh, from Triplett and, um, it's been signed off and agreed on by the, by the Driggers. Tammy and, and Eric, so. Um, basically what it says is that we're assigning the responsibility for meeting all the obligations of the community development block grant to them as the sub-applicant, so. Pretty straightforward. It will be, that's actually a different one.
Oh.
The one that you have in your packet is, yeah.
I was going to say that.
That's a different one. We'll get to that in a second.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the interlocal agreement? The Driggers. Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to, uh, approve the interlocal agreement with the Driggers and authorize a mayor to sign.
No, I got more.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the council, Councilman By.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
The interlocal agreement is hereby approved and the mayor will sign.
Each one that has an orange is where you will also sign.
So this is for.
Yeah, this is.
The legal authority to, uh, apply for this application also gives the mayor, um, the permission to sign the rest of the application form. So that's what he's signing now. I'm going to take this step real quick and then we'll talk about the next one.
Yep. And kind of start that process if you want to, yeah. So.
What happens if they turn it down?
If CDBG.
If the CDBG gets granted.
Yeah.
Then they don't get it.
The Driggers going to go and spend that kind of money or?
That's the plan.
Yeah.
They're still going to fix this building up.
Might not, might not go as quickly, but. Be, be part of that.
And we'll have, we'll have the same regulations either.
Yeah.
Also clear.
They might be able to put plastic windows in.
You were saying on this next one.
Yeah, so, uh, the second thing, the thing, the other thing that you have in front of you, this is actually something that we've been talking with Dale Franz over Dale's supermarket about. Um, the reason why you're, you're getting it tonight is because the deadline is, is a hard past deadline on it. Uh, so this is the seed grant, round two of the seed grant, which we applied for way back at the beginning of the year. Um, this is, this is the grant where we put together all the local grocery stores in the county, um, and then. We had another thing in there too, I can't remember exactly what it was. Uh, we put it together as a group application and Dale's was part of that to replace the floor. Um, and that, that was his part of that grant.
Right.
Um, we did not get awarded that grant. That grant ended up going to the Florence Library. Um, but they've opened up a second round of that grant, and so what you have in front of you is, is part of, part of that application, so. I revisited this with Dale and we found out we could have another go at it. Uh, he's more than happy to put it in. Uh, he thinks it's going to be about an eighty thousand dollar project. Um, replace the flooring in there and, and do some repairs. And this would give twenty-five thousand dollars of, of money from the state through the seed grant, which is tied still, I think, to the COVID funding.
The state ARPA.
Yeah, ARPA money, so. What, uh, what we would have to do if we were going to support this application is similar to what we just did with the Driggers. Um, and the application for one twenty-six North Main. Um, it would be the same kind of deal. It would be a pass-through grant where we would submit that, um, because we have to be the recipient on behalf of Dale. Um, and then, you know, it would go through them. They would be responsible for meeting all the obligations of that grant, so.
Would we not need to do what we just did with these then?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
This one's a little bit different.
This one's a little bit different. That's CDBG, that's through the Department of Commerce also. This is also through there, but that's part of their application process. This one's a little bit easier because it's with their ARPA funds, so some of the regulations are a little less than what the CDBG.
Right.
Um, applications are every year. So this one. Um, municipal governments and counties, economic development, local chamber of commerce, tribal. And five oh three, five oh one C three, five oh one C six are the only ones that can apply. That's why we're coming to you, asking if you'll sponsor this application, which will not cost you any money. Um, just, just like Matt said, it'll be a pass through for this one as well. So we have not taken the interlocal agreement that you have gotten. We have not taken this over for them to sign this. We were hoping that you guys will sponsor the application. We can sign the interlocal agreement and then Matt will go over there. And if you want me to go over that, just let me know.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Um. So we can go ahead and, and move forward with this.
The reason is the deadline for this one is.
Yes, very quickly.
Very quick deadline. Um, so we, we're kind of having to do it a little bit, a little bit backwards than how we normally would approach this. We really give it a little bit more space and time to talk about, but. Um, it is something that we've applied for before. It's just a different round and this time it's strictly for Dale's. We're not grouping this with any other projects in the county, so. Um, so what we need to do with this one is, is take a formal action on sponsorship?
Yes, let's, let's go ahead and make a motion, so it's in your minutes.
So what does that look like?
Um, if somebody could just do a motion to sponsor the Tefi seed application. Uh, for Dale's Grocery Store. And I think we should name both, uh, Dill and Melanie. Did I spell their last name right? That's what Google says, okay?
Yes.
Um, so let's name them also in that motion. Um, to sponsor the application and then we'll, we could do a separate app motion to do the interlocal agreement. That way we have it all in your minutes and it's very clear for you guys.
So there's two actions there. It would be the sponsorship with Dan for Dale's, uh, the Tefi seed grant. Dale's Grocery Store.
For Dale and Melanie.
Dale and Mel- Melanie Franz. And then the interlocal agreement, I will say the interlocal agreement is the exact same agreement that you just approved for the Driggers. We just had to change the, change the grant, um, name and the recipients in there. So it is literally the exact same thing.
You are still welcome to say pending approval by your attorney. You could put that in your motion, but it is the only thing I took out was CDBG and I put in. Um, the correct company. Those are the only changes I need to it.
I think, I think we're good. If that, of course, it's all subject to, if the council wants to.
Council, have any questions? Does our attorney have any questions? Okay. Is there any questions from the public? Hey, hearing none, I'd accept a motion to, um. Again, to sponsor this grant with the language that, I don't want to try to repeat all that language.
Tefi seed grant for Dale's supermarket or grocery store with Dale and Melanie Franz. Yeah. As the recipient.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll make a move.
Okay, Councilman By moves, is there a second?
I'm trying to, I can't remember all of them.
I'm hoping Danielle's got it.
Okay, we have a second from Councilman McCarty. Is there any further discussion?
I think that sounds very good. Dale needs a little help.
Yeah.
We need a grocery store.
Absolutely.
It's a must. Otherwise the town's down.
Yeah. Well, there's several things that, that fall in that category and that's absolutely one of them.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, we, this time I don't think we need to poll the council on this. We can, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now we will take up the interlocal agreement. Would somebody care to make a motion that we, uh, adopt the interlocal agreement and authorize the mayor to sign?
I might go a second.
We have a motion by Councilman McCarty and it's second by Councilman By. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say, or, yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We don't need to poll on that. Okay, uh, that motion is approved and the mayor will sign. You have the copies to be, it's not even going to be signed this time.
Let's go ahead and sign. Matt and I, so we both have your signature. You want me to go over there with you or you go?
I'll talk to him.
Okay, and you will, once they sign, if you go ahead and send the, uh, fully executed that.
Sorry, sorry about putting that out there.
Yeah.
A little bit quicker than we normally.
Over the door.
I appreciate you guys and all of our paperwork today. And we'll also have you sign in, please.
Is there any other?
I hope that's it.
Business head. So. We will now move from, uh, from those items into our business items section of our agenda. The first item up there is consideration of a purchase utility poles. A purchase of utility poles from Bridgewell Resources at a cost of twenty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars, thirty-four cents. Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. This is, um, it's actually just a restock project. Um, we've got thirty-two poles and various lengths and different classes. Um, so plastic is, you know, determined by size and what the weight bearing structure and load can be on those poles. Uh, so we've got kind of a mix there. This is, this is not a full order of poles, like a full, um. Full truck, I guess, is what they would call it, but, uh, it's a split truck and mixed truck, so we're able to get it at, at a pretty, pretty fair price. This is our normal, normal vendor for this. There's not a lot of people who sell utility poles in the state of Canton, so. Uh, we felt like the price was pretty good based on what we had seen and what we had paid previously, so. Uh, proposed cost is twenty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, it's a purchase above ten thousand, so as per our purchasing policy, you have to approve that.
So what is the availability of these poles? Are they readily available?
Relatively, uh, less than a month, so we'll have them.
I, hard to believe that we can get them that soon.
Hard to believe you'd get anything in the electrical department that soon, but.
Yeah.
Poles are there.
So are they?
How many do we replace every year?
That's, sorry about that.
Oh, depends, probably. Somewhere between fifteen and twenty, given year.
Yeah, we build two.
We do build out sections too. One of the things, we're going to be building a section on this, so. You know, some of these.
Yeah, that's delivered.
Off the truck. Any other questions? Is there a motion to, uh, prove the purchase of utility poles from Bridgewell Resources at a delivered cost? Of twenty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars, thirty-four cents.
I might go a second.
I'll second. Councilman McCarty moves, Councilman Low. Councilman McCarty moves, Councilman Lowen seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, next item is consideration of a replacement HVAC unit. For the raw water pump station from appliance parts specialist slash triple A appliance. At a cost of eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, Mr. Styles.
Mouthful too, uh, some pump house at the reservoir, I, just to kind of give you a, a framework of how that works, we got pump outside at the reservoir, that's where our high, high. Service pumps are, that pump the water into the, uh, waste, or water treatment plant, excuse me. Uh, then it enters our system and goes out, out the other end, that's kind of the basic end, so this is the, the first stage of that where we bring the water in. Uh, we've had some issues with the high service pumps this year, we actually had one rebuilt last week. Um. But the HVAC system in there is starting to, to give out, and so in the summertime, that's a real problem for us because they have, uh, VFDs on them, very. Variable frequency drives, uh, for those pumps and those are kind of sensitive to, uh, temperature. Um, so we have to, uh, maintain that in HVAC controlled environment out there. Uh, the current unit's about nineteen years old, um, it's, we've kind of limped it along and had the, had, had it serviced several times just to try to keep it moving. Uh, but now that we're out of the hot weather, we feel like it's time to do the replacement on this. Um, the heat's not as big a deal, or the, the cold weather is not as big a deal because we have alternatives for heat, but. Um, we really wanna make sure that we get it in place before spring and summer of next year, so. Uh, we got two quotes on replacement, we had Titan Mechanical out of Wichita for seventeen thousand, four thirty-seven, uh, with ten to twelve weekly time. Uh, appliance parts specialist, A triple A appliance, they're out of P bar, they quoted us, uh, eleven, eleven thousand, five fifty-five. And a ten week build time, so they're about the same amount of time each one, but, uh, the, the. Triple A appliance was a better price, um. We had a hard time actually finding people to quote us this one, that was a little bit tricky getting a second one. Uh, triple A, we, we worked with them quite a bit and they were pretty easy to get, but. Uh, the, the second one was a little bit harder. Um, so it's lower cost if we go with the triple A appliance parts specialists, uh, local service staff, we've worked with them before, pretty comfortable with them, so. Um, this was not in a budget, budget for this year, and so. Uh, we're gonna have to, to look at this, but it's pretty critical to operations that we make sure we have this in place, um. We have, we've got a little bit of a cash flow issue with the water department, just because of the KD, eighty, KDHT pilot study, we don't get reimbursed. I wouldn't say in a timely way, but you know, they, they have their own schedule for that, and so we've got about ninety thousand dollars sitting out there. Or, excuse me, fifty thousand dollars sitting out there in reimbursables that we're waiting to get in check from. Um, so, ten week timeline, we'll probably be looking at sometime early in next year, um, but when you, if you were to approve that, it'll get encumbered today, so. Um. You know, we're, we're gonna have to adjust a little bit in the budget probably for this, but we're already getting in there to adjust it for some other things, including the pilot project, so.
How long do you think this unit will last? Cause you said the other one was what, nineteen?
Nineteen years, yeah. Did pretty well, um, I would say they don't build them like they used to, um. Ten, fifteen years, what we do regular maintenance on them, we try to take good care of our stuff, so.
So to take the old one out, is, are you gonna have it as backup sometime? Or you just, they just take it?
I think we're gonna just take it out, I don't know that it's gonna be serviceable for backup, we'll see. That might be a good question to ask, though, I don't know what the game plan is with that. Uh, but with the, with it being kind of a critical, it's a critical piece of equipment to maintain that, um, we're asking to move forward with that and at least get it. Get that process started, even though we probably won't see it till the beginning of next year.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the purchase. Of a new H, a replacement HVAC unit for the raw water pump station from appliance parts specialist slash triple A appliance. At a cost of eleven thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars.
I might get motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds, any further discussion?
You said we'd have to move some money from where, somewhere else or something? No, we, we don't have to move, we just, we just have to allo- change the budget to allocate. Allocate it, but the money's there. Money's there, yeah, money's there.
Okay. Yeah. Any further questions or discussion?
Not for me.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, last item up is consideration of a request to deposit. One point five million dollars at the municipal investment pool, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so back in August, we approved creation of a, a municipal investment pool account for the city. Um, we got that set up, and so what we've, we've been looking at and analyzing our cash, kind of figure out where we wanna do with that, so. We've come to the conclusion about a one point five million in, in our idle cash, which we usually average around two, two and a half million. Uh, we'd like to move that into the MIP, uh, because the interest rates over there are better than the ones we're currently getting at CMB. Uh, Central National Bank, excuse me. Uh, right now, uh, our account at Central National gets four percent, a little over four percent, um. And the rate on the municipal investment pool is about four point eight three percent. Um, so if you do the math and plug that through on a third day return, we'll get about additional thousand dollars in interest, uh, generated there. Which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start talking about how that adds up over the course of a year, it'd be pretty significant, twelve, twelve thousand dollars. Um. So you know, it's a, it's a pretty fair amount, uh, it's also a large amount of money to be moving, um, so. We wanted to come to you to, to get the blessing before we did that, I mean, we've already created the account, we're not spending the money, we're just moving it into a higher interest bearing account. Um, but we wanted to definitely get approval before we did that.
And the money's safe for it.
Yeah, it's a safe investment, there, there's no, there's no risk involved with that, they just get a, a better interest rate.
Better interest rate, okay.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a, um, motion to, uh, to approve the, uh, request to deposit one point five million at the municipal investment pool.
I might get a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we will now move into a land bank meeting. And, uh, so I will call the meeting of the Land Bank of City of Hillsborough, Kansas to order. Uh, first item up in our land bank meeting is approval of minutes from our September nine, twenty twenty-three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, so then I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Councilman By moves, is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and we have vouchers totaling thirteen hundred and twenty dollars, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, these are just mowing vouchers, um, when we, we moved. Well, th- this property was originally, or has been in the land bank, um, and then we, we've signed these mowing agreements and. Previously, we were taking the mowing agreements out of the, just the regular city funds, when it actually should have been allocated to the land bank, because that's where, where those. Properties are, they're land bank properties, so. Uh, what you're talking about is Hillsborough Heights, all the area over Hillsborough Heights that still remains, and the AMPI building, all that, it gets mowed on a regular basis. Uh, and then Willow Glen, which is the south section of where the houses are, we have that, um. Part of the subdivision in the old hospital property, so here are just regular mowing invoices, we wanted to put them in front of you so that we get them approved to, to pay. Um, this will actually be the last set of vouchers for this, for these mowing contracts, I believe, so, yeah, for the mowing.
I believe so.
For the season.
Any, any questions?
I think so.
Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the payment of the vouchers totaling thirteen hundred and twenty dollars to. Heffley Mowing for nine hundred and Plinert Mowing for four hundred and twenty dollars.
I might get a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman Lowen, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we are now into a, a discussion section, which is an update on our. Strategic plan, this is the Q three update, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we've got our three main goals, you know, tier one things, childcare, uh, housing and workforce development, those are kind of the big ones. It's where we try to spend a fair amount of time on that, and I think we've made a lot of great progress with childcare. Uh, housing, we're getting some momentum with that, workforce isn't, we're not, we're not moving real fast on that one, but. Trying, we've got, we have a few things in the hopper, so, uh, with the, the childcare thing, of course, we talked about the CDBG that we got. Uh, the six hundred thousand for that, the total amount raised now is sitting over two point, two point three million, uh, which is awesome, it's great. Um, so we're starting, we're starting that process with CDBG, we had to go through a bunch of environmental review things, which are now finished. And we've submitted that stuff to the state, um, and we're just waiting on the state to release the funds and then that project can go to bid, we're hoping to get that project out to bid in November. Hopefully get somebody on board, um, who can maybe start working or late, maybe later this year, probably more likely early next year. Um, it's a pretty. You know, it's a pretty, yeah, well, most of it's indoor process, so, um, it should be, should be kind of guided from that. Hoping to continue if the construction timeline works, we're still hoping to open by August of next year, which would be awesome, time for the school year. Um, kind of coordinate that with, uh. With the school year there, so we're gonna see how it goes, but, uh, of course, when you enter these, enter these, uh, kind of building projects, especially when you're renovating a building, you never know what you're gonna find in there. Um, we, we think we know what we got there, but until you start opening things up, you never know, so. Um, real exciting with that one, uh, we also received, uh, a grant, which, uh, for playground equipment, a fifty, fifty, fifty grand on that. From game time, so that was pretty cool. Uh, were able to, to get some more, uh, half, basically half-priced playground equipment, which is ridiculously expensive if you've ever bought playground equipment. Um, so that, we're, we're doing really well with that one, I think the childcare center is right on track for where we want it to be, hopefully we'll get her open next year. Um, housing, kind of looking at housing, scroll down to that. Um, had, had a few things going on with that, of course, we finished, uh, the housing needs assessment, we went over that at the last meeting, and if, um. That allows us to get into the rural housing incentive district program, which is one of the things, um, the Driggers mentioned. Or Crystal mentioned about the Driggers property. Uh, there may be an opportunity to use that program to help renovate the upstairs for apartments, if that's something that they wanna do. Um, so we got that, we're working with a developer who's interested in doing some infill developments, uh, they've got kind of a different model, um. They, they need to get about four infill lots, I'm having difficulty finding that, um, so we're still trying to work with them on that. Uh, it's, it's kind of hard to get your hands on infill lots, and they're, they're out there, but people aren't necessarily willing to sell them and. Uh, or there's other issues with them, like the house we knocked down on Lincoln, that one's tied up and probably will be for a while on that one, so. Uh, we're working with that, I also had a great conversation with Menonite Housing, um, they're one of the community housing development organizations, they're out of Wichita. Uh, we had talked with them about two years ago on maybe putting together a project, um, and I, I met with them again yesterday. Talked with them and pretty, pretty substantial in-depth about kind of where we could potentially go, so we'll see if we can put something on that. Um, still kind of have a, a housing or a apartment complex thing, sort of ha- hopping around with a. Uh, another community housing organization out of Oklahoma, that's one that we had worked with our, uh, our town development, uh, yeah, our town. Um. With, and so we're, we're still kind of kicking around with that one, we'll see, that one, the problem with that one has been the land, we haven't been able to get, get that one knocked down and secured, so. Got some things going on that, uh, oh, the shipping container thing too, that's one that's still kind of hopping around. Um, we've talked to the developers on that pretty regularly, you know, they, they have to, their next step is to go to the planning commission. Uh, and they haven't, they have yet to submit the full set of plans that the planning commission requires to review that application, so. That would be an alternative housing district application, so. Uh. Don't know, I, every time I talk to them, they're still interested, they're telling me they're gonna get it to, haven't seen it yet, so. To be determined, right, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Uh, so that's housing, and then on workforce development stuff, um, we're trying a little bit on that. Of course, this, this goal also has our entrepreneurship center partnership tied into that, so. That's moving really well, I feel pretty good with that, um, that we've been kind of meeting as an advisory board and, and helping guide that. Um, they've taken on with, with Jeremy on there as new director, they've taken on the youth entrepreneurship challenge, um, which is. A program through Network Kansas that was kind of, used to be kind of. Co, co-managed by the two communities, Marion and Hillsborough. Um, you know, staffing has changed there, so we, we've kind of pulled all that together, just with, uh, the Center for Entrepreneurship taking the lead on that, so. That's a great program, we've gotten a lot of interest in the past on that, and hoping to kind of reengage and reignite that for this next year. Um, and then we're also working, continuing to work on workforce solutions, we haven't made a whole lot of progress on that, um. I think our next step is getting stakeholders to the table and just sort of working through that process. Um. So that's just kind of where we're at on those things, any questions about the tier one goals, those are kind of the, the big three? Right? Moving on to the community development goals, we've got quite a bit going on in that, so. Uh, with the splash pad opening up, we finished phase one, um, and we, we closed the pad October first-ish. We ended up being a couple days after that, um, yeah, and so we got that kind of locked down for the winter, um, still keeping the bathrooms open and. And kind of managing that, we've had a little bit of vandalism in there, which is unfortunate, but, um. Something you kind of deal with when you have public restrooms, but, and we're, we're still trying to keep an eye on that too. Um, getting designs together for the amphitheater, which is a phase two piece of this. Um, like, I think I mentioned before that we've got an anonymous donor who wants to do a match up to seventy-five thousand, uh, we think the project's gonna be about a hundred and fifty. Um, so we're in the, kind of in the fundraising business at this point, I don't think the city wants to, to take on that, that cost by itself. So, um, I think the community will get behind that, though, I've had a lot of very positive comments and some offers to help fund it, so. Uh, we'll see how it goes, it's kind of one of those things that. Uh, I'm, I'm hoping to get the group that helped raise some of the funds for the first phase to help with the second phase. But, you know, uh, they, they've mission accomplished on the first phase, so we'll see how it goes. Um, and some of the other goals in there, you know, we've talked about regulating downtown businesses or providing, improving regulations for them and supporting commerce. Uh, the community garden, kind of ongoing things. Uh, one of the things in there is developing a recreation plan, uh, and with Jerry on board now, I feel like we can kind of move that direction. So, uh, we're gonna start that in twenty twenty-four and, and kind of move that date a little bit around, but, um. We're gonna, we're gonna keep pushing on that, I think that could be something that could be included in the CIP and then also to go out and, and get grants for, so. Um, a lot of stuff happening in there, of course, we've completed a lot of things in there, um. But I, I feel like we're doing pretty well in the community development phase. Uh, financial stability, we, you know, we've, we've made, made a lot of increases and, and traction there, um. Right now, our, our electric fund's in pretty good shape from where it was, especially from where it was last year. Water and sewer funds are probably still gonna need to, to do some rate adjustments there, potentially, well, water for sure, I think. Sewer's probably not gonna be too terrible much, but there, there's just increased costs there, and we really haven't adjusted those rates, at least the sewer rate for a long time. Um, we're always looking for ways to, to cut costs on that, and, you know, we're, we're constantly looking at that, but we're not where we wanna be. Yet on the targets for those, uh, but we're, we're working our way toward it. Um, and then the comprehensive, comprehensive fee schedule, that thing's just been sitting on our desk, every time we get into it, we seem to find something new. Um, and so Andrew's, Andrew's helped us a lot on that, but every time we, we start, we get something new, and so it sort of goes in this whole thing. Um, we're gonna get there, I'm hoping to get that thing knocked out by the end of this year. Uh, and then CIP, we've got the infrastructure plan complete, I'm still working a little bit on some of the other equipment stuff. Uh, we'll probably split this up and just do the capital improvement, the infrastructure part now, uh, and then bring the capital improvement later, um. I originally kind of thought putting them together made a lot of sense, but. Again, when you start getting into the capital equipment stuff, it's, it, there's more stuff that keeps getting added to it, so. We should move on with the infrastructure part and then get to the capital equipment a little bit later, so. Um, that's, that's kind of the financial stability thing, uh, moving on to the public safety goal. Uh, of course, we've completed the EMS thing, got the concepts for the new public safety building, we're gonna be meeting again in October, actually next Thursday. To talk about the current designs. Um, been working with the Brownsville program on completing a phase two environmental grant, um, or a phase two environmental on that property. Uh, they pay for that, the state pays for that through Brownfields Fund. Um, and that'll actually lead us into qualifying for additional funding from the EPA, potentially to knock down parts of that building. Uh, which would be amazing, cause that is, the last, the last cost estimate we have for that was six hundred and fifty some thousand dollars, so. Uh, we definitely do not wanna bear the burden of that, but if the EPA would be willing to bear the burden of that, I think that would be a great deal for us. Uh, that was, that's a gift that just keeps on giving on north in the main street with that particular thing. Um, is what it is, we've got it, we've had it for a long time, um. Police stations there, we've got some. Police stations there, we've got some stores in there, the welding schools there, so it's not all bad. It's just, you know, there's, there's areas of that we wish weren't there. And so if we can take care of that, we will. Um hoping to move forward with trying to figure out how to fund fire station again right now. I know that we've talked a lot about grants and we've had a lot of success this year in grants, so. We're gonna try to keep riding that wave a little bit and find some more money to help pay for some of that too, so. That is the update. I'll answer any questions you might have. Been talking for a second.
You had mentioned the uh bathrooms were got vandalized last summer.
Yep.
Have, has the city thought about putting cameras up over there?
We have a proposal for that, yeah. Uh we actually have a proposal for that and the park, the pool. Um there's another area too. We've, we're kind of grouping that together. We'll prob, you'll probably be seeing that beginning of this year, yeah. Yeah. Uh another thing I would say about this is I, I think we're, we would be well-served if we sat down after the next year. Uh we'll have a new council member. Sorry, Dave. Welcome to participate though.
Yeah, come and visit and bug you guys.
Encourage you to do that, yeah. I think it would be time to, to revisit the, the strategic plan, update some things. Uh maybe reset the vision a little bit, or at least the goals and objectives. Uh we've, we've knocked a lot of it off the list and so. Uh we need more work on and you know, maybe there's some things on there that we need to add, we need to adjust. Uh but I would recommend we do that in.
Yeah.
January or February.
Rod?
Yeah, I just uh, we see that uh Harrington has left us. Uh my opinion and I, it didn't need to be here in the first place. We have a fine clinic out the hospital. And uh but now that building's sitting there. You know, our health department in Marion, they've been looking at thousands and thousands of dollars to revamp a building. I'd, I'd sure start talking to our uh county. And say, you know. It'd be better over here than there. I, they fight it tooth and nail, but uh.
The specter of that just keeps raising its ugly head.
I know, but it'd be, here we'd have a building. I don't know what they'd have to do, but it's, it's, it's a lot of. They even got the generator and all this the other day.
Oh, yeah.
It's gone.
Yeah.
But I don't think they needed one anyway, or they maybe did, but we wouldn't.
Yeah, for medical facility does. I mean, they put about two million dollars into that building.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
It's significant investments.
Yeah.
I think for reading the papers, a couple of commissioners that would be in favor of building it over here, but there's some that.
Yeah, I think we just have to push on a little bit.
But won't be too late now, I don't know.
Don't know either.
And there's a lot swirling around about that. There was a story on the uh, in, in one of the local papers that was too late for print. That said there's a one point nine million dollar lawsuit against this property here in Hillsborough for unpaid. Unpaid funds.
Yeah, yeah, I read that.
Yeah, it's gonna be tied up for a little while, I think. We're just, full disclosure, we've got a, an open utility bill with them too. So there's, there's a process for that for us as well, but we'll, we'll be in line. Do not know if we'll ever get paid for it, but I sort of doubt it. Uh when we tried to call them, they were unreachable, so we'll. We'll, we'll go through our process with that.
Yep.
You bet, but it's just the way it is, I guess.
Well, they did look good over here. They can keep their courthouse where the sands aren't rolling.
Well, actually, there's certainly more people over here.
It's true.
You know, if you got right down to brass tacks, it would.
Like I said, you know, that specter just keeps raising. I had to look that up. I wasn't sure exactly what a specter was, but uh that's probably not a positive thing, I'm thinking.
Specter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, um are there any other questions regarding the strategic plan update? Hearing none, we will move on and let you talk some more, Mr. Styles, and we'll let you give us your city administrator's report.
Sure thing. Uh okay, thank you. Uh job fair with the core, just reminding we're gonna do that the end of the month. Saturday twenty eighth from eight to noon, that four H building. Uh I got the financial report for September attached there and a dashboard report. Um mostly doing pretty well. The general fund, if you'll notice, has kind of a lower than normal days on hand. Uh the reason why that is, we haven't really, we haven't really touched our transfers uh all that much, so. Uh if we were to execute them, we'd have an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the, in the general fund. We just haven't done that. We sort of. Monitor that as it goes. Um I'm not super concerned about it. Uh you know, we take in enough to kind of even that out. And that's sort of how we manage the general fund now. It would be great if it was a little higher. Uh absolutely, I would love for that to be much higher than it is. Uh to get closer to our ninety day goal, but we're, we're just not there and that's, that's not really traditionally how that fund's been managed in the city of Hillsborough either. So um we're gonna try to change that, but that's something we need to incorporate on. Uh water fund, you know, the delay and the reimbursements, like I mentioned that, getting that pilot study money to come in at the right time, creating a little bit of a cash flow there, but. Hope to resolve that fairly quickly. Um if you have any questions about any of the financial stuff, happy to answer those. I've tagged some things in there that I, I think are kind of areas of concern. Um chemical costs are pretty high this year. They've started to go up. Uh of course, our raw water costs will go up. We talked about water. Uh that's now that forty year contract that we had that was set rate is, of course, we proved that a couple of years ago and every year now it adjusts up. Uh I think this year was three and a half percent. Um so that's gonna continue to go up. That's just how the Kansas Water Office is doing that nowadays.
Let's just make sure we're correct on that, that there was no negotiation.
There's still to get, well, that's true.
I mean, the state.
It was a, here's what it is.
That's right, there was.
That's what it is. Take it or leave it.
We had no ability to.
There wasn't a whole lot of room there. That's just their standard deal now, so. Uh with the sewer fund, where we'll have to amend, we mentioned mending the budget for the sewer cleaning lining, when, when we approved that, we meant, we had to, to do that. Um yeah, there's just different things there. We know we're gonna have to amend the trash fund too, because the trash truck purchase that had to be accounted for a little differently, so. Um yeah, and the, and the electric, we're, the cash level back up in the electric. We haven't done any of the transfers yet though, so that's, that's a big chunk of change that'll come out of that. But it's in much better shape than it was at the end of last year, so feel pretty positive about that. Uh looking at the sales tax numbers, we are a little bit down from where we were last year, uh five percent off of, of that now, so. Tracking a little lower than, than we were last year. Of course, last year was a record high. Uh we'll see how it goes. There's been some things with the state and how they dispersed their money that has kind of screwed us up a little bit. So I don't know if they're, like last, last year, we had a couple of months that were a little bit odd, that we ended up getting more, because they kind of combined. Portions of two months together. State's not doing real well in getting us the money, I guess is kind of the bottom line with that. Um they, then they're, they're rolling it over into other months. It's just kind of creates a mess for us, but. Um it is what it is. We can't change the state. Uh but we're, we're, we're working hard to deal with it, so. Uh so that's the financial. Any questions on the financials? Happy to answer those. Okay. Uh league conference, we went to the league conference, our delegation, which uh Blake, Mayor, Danielle and myself went to that. Uh had some really interesting things on there. Great opportunity to connect to vendors. That was really helpful. There was a couple of things we were kind of in the market for that were, they were, they were there to sell it to us, so. Um kind of looking, that was good. Educational sessions were good. Uh probably the highlight for me was the bill legislation, how to access some of that money. Um and the state of Kansas has actually set up a matching fund for small communities too, so. A lot of times when you get these federal grants, it requires you to produce, you know, twenty, thirty percent of that money. Uh which isn't always possible, uh especially for small, small communities. And so the state set aside a chunk of money to help pay for that. Um and so if we run into a situation like the E P A grant uh that we may potentially look at. The state will actually put in some matching money now, which is pretty cool. Um I think that's a good thing that they've done with that, some of that funds. Um so that, that was kind of the highlight for me. I don't know if you guys have anything to add as far as the league.
Well, I would say that uh. The uh, I've been very impressed with the new director of the league and uh. They also went through the strategic planning process and presented their new strategic plan, which I felt was good. It's interesting to me that uh, that uh the uh. They, the continued, I guess, I want to say, I, I, I want to say attack, but it's, I don't know if that, that's a proper word, but. Local government in the end, in the, you know, it's always under pressure, you know, from the state. From other interests, you know, on the utility side that are always trying to come in and take the local control away. Or lower, you know, lower our ability to, to control things locally, and I think we all. Would agree that, you know, the closer we can keep our decisions to the people that, that are affected by it, the better off we are. And uh you know, we've had a couple of comments tonight that, that talk about tax money, whether it's state tax money or federal tax money, you know, it's still all of our tax money. But really, the, the, the tax money that im, that is most impactful, you know, happens at the local level and, and. You know, the city and, and of course, the county is our biggest levy here, so. You know, there's, there's two levels there that, that are very impactful, so. We want to, and the league helps us. I mean, the league is, is all about local control and then. You know, they're lobbying for us and they're, and they're really a great resource to go to, you know, if we have questions about things and, and so forth. So I'm glad we're members of the league and I'm, I'm really liking the direction the league is, is going.
Yeah, I, I definitely, I agree with that. Um one of the things that I took away there um. Was when I, I took a workshop about the uh. Um Build Kansas Fund, which is basically a subshoot of the bipartisan infrastructure plan from the federal government. Kansas was awarded two hundred million dollars of that money from the infrastructure plan, and so. This Build Kansas Fund is helping local municipalities get some money and uh. And that just kind of blew my mind how much money the federal government's wanting to spend in local rural Kansas.
Because they don't have to balance their.
But no, it was a great, great conference. Uh again, with the strategic plan, that was pretty good too.
It's ambitious. I give him, I give him credit for being ambitious. We'll see how it goes. Uh okay, uh K M U Water Conference, I had that last week. It was after the league conference. Uh there's some really important things happening on the reg- uh regulation and legislation side. Uh so there, there are some proposed rules from K D H E that would pretty, pretty dramatically impact our ability. Uh our, our class of water system and uh how we certify operators. Uh so that's, that's been kind of top of mind. I met with Representative Owens, he'll be our representative one more year. Um to talk about that and, and some other issues, so we're gonna try to press on a little bit on that, because I don't think that these. Regulations uh that K D H E is talking about are gonna be helpful for anybody, so. Um we're gonna, we're gonna try to advocate for that and, and, and do the best we can with that. Uh Flint Hills Regional Council, uh we kind of talked about that a little bit a couple of meetings ago. Um Mayor and I are gonna go to attend their meeting uh at Fort Riley this Friday. Uh we are not technically in their region, but I think that their priorities and their programming line up a lot better with us and what we're talking about doing than. Uh the South Central Kansas Economic Development District that we are in.
SCAD.
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 SCAD, that probably rings a bell. Talking acronyms. Uh so we're on the very north end of the SCAD region and I, you know. I know the county is represented at the county level there. I don't know that we get a lot of interaction with them, so. Um I think this may be a better fit for us and it really, it only costs us twenty five hundred dollars to be a member. Uh and I think, you know, we'll, we'll evaluate it and see, but it might be a good, uh maybe a good decision for us to, to join that group too. Uh utility rates, I mentioned that. Uh we're gonna have to look at water rates and maybe, maybe the sewer rates too. Uh sewer rates haven't been adjusted since fourteen, so they're, they're just some, just some ongoing costs that we haven't really have been able to account for, so. Uh budget revisions, we talked about that to target the second meeting in November for that process. There's of course a publication process for that, so we'll kind of walk you through that. Uh PFAS, which was the, we joined the class action lawsuit about that. You may remember that, um which are the uh. Forever chemicals that are in water supplies. Uh we just received our analysis from the Marion County Reservoir and turns out, to nobody's surprise, that there are some present. In Marion County Reservoir. Um how that impacts the lawsuit, I'm not exactly sure, you know, those are. Those are mechanisms that are, are kind of big and global things, and so we'll see kind of how it works out. Um. I would, would reassure everybody that we don't actually have that in, in the treated water. It's in the reservoir water, so. Just beware of that if you're out there. Um yeah. Uh the health insurance savings reports there for you. You can see kind of where we are at. Uh four thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars in savings compared to our fully funded plan. Uh kind of had a bigger, had some bigger claims in September, not as much as the previous month though, so. Overall, we're up fifteen thousand and, and change from, for the plan year versus where we would have been with the fully funded plan. And we've got a pretty healthy reserve balance of thirteen thousand. I think I also put the K K P P bill in there. I didn't really mention it, but. Yeah, our K P P bill's in there. Um would say it's, it's, we had a really positive E C A again uh with that. And so we've, we've been tracking pretty low as far as that cost goes, so that's a good thing for the city. Um speaking of K P P, Public Power Week. We tied for first on the Public Power Week. Uh. No, they, they flipped a coin and we did not win the coin toss. Wish all the best to the city of Erie. They deserve it. They did a great job too. Um so that, that trophy will be traveling to Erie here shortly. Um so that, that's a good deal, but we really enjoyed it. I think it's, it's fun. Uh Public Power Week's a good time. We enjoy that. Get to get out and talk to people and do some fun things, so it's good, that's good there. Uh and then one of the things we do during Public Power Week is a food drive. Uh you come in, you donate food, that goes to Main Street Ministries. I don't know how much, we, we have basically two giant boxes full of stuff.
Wow.
Yeah, pretty, pretty fair amount. And then uh we do a drawing for a, a little bit of a discount on your December bill and Brenda Walls was the big winner this year. Brenda brought in a lot of food, so not surprised she won. Uh so she'll get that discount at the end of the year. And that is everything I have, sir.
Very good. Any questions? Good report. All right, we have our final public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody from the public online. Rod or Jane, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I've been thinking what this place needs is a laundry.
Laundry mat?
Yeah, there used to be one and now it's the telephone office.
Yep.
I'm told it had some um burglary vandalism, whatever.
Yeah.
Povels. So I was saying, why didn't they use tickets or something, cards? Anyway, it's off to some, but.
I think other people felt the same way as you do, that we could use a laundry mat too.
Yeah.
I mean, I couldn't use it because it'd be so full of fragrance. I'd be still going in there, but.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good point. We have laundry at different places, the little red building down here, the three different places. Had a dry cleaner at one time that, that we don't have anymore, you know.
Had one on May in the laundry.
Yeah.
Frank Crowell's friend.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I worked, I worked for Frank and, and uh helping him with his carpet cleaning stuff and.
I helped him a couple of times.
Smoke, smoke restoration. That was uh, that was not so much fun. But it, anyway, it was a job.
It's work.
Way to earn some spending money when you're a kid. Okay, is there any other public comments? Uh now we'll move into council comments. Councilman By?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman McCarty?
I'd like to thank people for coming in. I think Rod asked questions, which helped me learn things and sure, he learned some things he didn't know. So I think it's, I like to see people come in and actually ask positive questions.
Yeah, me too. Thanks for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Councilman Owen?
No, no, no comments tonight.
All right, so go H M S basketball, right?
That's right.
When we start?
Thursday.
Thursday, we start practice.
Okay, all right. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.
Thanks for coming, Neil. You didn't get to say anything.
Well, I got asked one question. I just didn't have to say much in order to respond to it, so that's all right. That's a good, that's a good meeting.
I was in the city of Bel Air today.
Well, it's about ready to get hot. That's, that's my, I'm, I'm headed to right now.
Okay. Good luck. Tell, tie high for me.
Hey, I would like to point out that I unseated Danielle at the uh prize giveaway.
Thank you, Neil.
Not only did she not.
Garbage for you.